There we go.
It is now 6:32 PM. I'm Craig King of the Superintendent of Schools, calling the meeting to order and declare a quorum of, I believe we have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine members here this evening. I'd like to welcome our new member, Tess Licati, who was elected last night to the school board. Welcome.
Congratulations.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meetings to be determined. That's part of the work that we'll do tonight. To consider action relevant to additions or adjustments to the agenda. Are there any additions or adjustments to the agenda? Are there any comments from the audience? Can I hear a motion to accept the minutes for the June 3, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? And all in favor? Opposed? Thank you. I know. Can I hear a motion to accept the minutes for the June 10, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. It says here that I did a point of order and I suggested what the motion should say. And then I stated that it would be, should be stated, the item should be stated as to move that we are here for, you know, we're here for the superintendent's raise. And which it says simple and state, but that isn't, wasn't the whole motion. And then someone else added to the motion to clarify as of, from the June 5 discussion. And then it says here that I felt that I, that I said, I moved to get the superintendent raise. That isn't what I did. The motion, nobody voted on it. This was not, this was not my motion at all. I did not move to get the superintendent a raise. All I did was to reword the article on the, on the agenda.
So are you saying the minutes are incorrect?
Absolutely.
So even though on the bottom of that page, Fran, the motion on the floor ends up as Ms. Monroe moves to give the superintendent a raise as discussed in the previous executive session, that isn't the final motion that you're comfortable with?
No, that was just a, I was just fixing the agenda item. And it got seconded. And then we took a vote, but I thought, no, I didn't think. I knew that we were voting on my, my change of the agenda. We have to vote to make a change to the agenda. And that's what I was doing.
No, we were not in the, we were not in the agenda portion during, at that point.
We were. That's why I made the motion.
You made, I asked for a motion. You made a motion.
You asked for a motion and I says, I need to, point of order. I need to make it more clear. And
And I said, then make that motion. And that's the motion you made?
No, I didn't hear you say that. I'm sorry.
No, that's 100% what I said. I said it like five times.
In fact, I'm not the only one who said, did we take a vote when, when I left? Did we, did we take a vote for the superintendent's raise? I says, I didn't see it.
What? No, we absolutely did.
No. And the minutes doesn't reflect that either. It says, I made the motion to get the superintendent. There's no way I would have made that motion.
That's the motion you made. I asked for a motion. That's the motion you made.
And you know what bothers me the most? That meeting wasn't recorded. So it's going to be he said, she said type of a conversation tonight. And I knew that would happen. And I'm telling you, I knew what I was doing. And if anyone hears something different than, I'm the only one who didn't hear that? I don't think so because another board member didn't hear the motion either.
Well, that board member doesn't seem to be here.
I know it, unfortunately.
So that's, it's weird. The two of you are just, what, conspiring outside?
One of the, here's somebody that you thought to know.
There he is.
You're on the floor. Now, why would that be funny? I mean, I don't understand that statement.
What's funny?
What's funny?
Didn't you just say that? Isn't that funny that?
It's funny that Jim walked in and immediately is put on the spot.
So I know what I said.
So it just needs to be corrected?
There's no correction.
There's no correction to me.
I wasn't here, so I'm not.
Oops, sorry. Jennifer?
Did you get it?
Yeah, I did. I just moved the chair.
Okay, so do you have a specific clarification for the minutes from your?
Did I have a?
Yeah, you're, so
You mean from that night?
So there's, on the floor is what we're discussing is
What was?
Are there any corrections to the minutes? And so can you say specifically your correction to the minutes?
My motion that is simple, state they give the superintendent a raise. Yes, that paragraph is correct. But it's the next sentence, I moved to get the superintendent a raise. It should have been moved, that we moved because it was seconded, to accept my adjustment to the agenda. That's what it should have been. That's the next thing because that's what we did. We would make an emotion to accept my adjustment to the agenda. You have to vote to adjust that agenda. You can't just let me talk and, you know, not take a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sam.
So as the chair at the time, I did not consider that an adjustment to the agenda. The old business was to authorize the board chair to notify the superintendent of the employment terms discussed during executive session. You said a point of order that you would like the motion to be more clear. I said, make that motion then. You made that motion and then we acted on that motion.
No, it was seconded.
Right.
And then we were, that's exactly right. We took action on that motion. And that's where the vote was. The vote wasn't that I made also a statement saying I want to give the superintendent a raise. I did not say that.
Your motion was to give the superintendent a raise. That's what Maggie wrote down. Then Jason said, can I add the raise that was discussed in the previous executive session? You accepted that friendly amendment. And then we, then, then the motion was clarified to give the superintendent a raise that was discussed in the previous executive session. That was seconded. And then we all voted on it, just like the minutes said.
No, that's, that's not, that's, the exact thing was to take a motion, change the motion. You said, go ahead and do that, which I did.
I said, make a motion.
Yeah.
And you did.
And I did. I made a motion that we were to give the superintendent, we're here to get the superintendent a raise, that the employment terms we discussed was too vague. That was in the agenda. So, but that wasn't to give him a raise. That was to make the motion to change the agenda. When did I change, when did the agenda get changed?
That's not a significant change of the agenda. That's the same business.
Of course, the complete rewording of the agenda. That's a significant change.
All of these agenda items are only suggested possible motions. We don't have to stick to the letter of the motion on the agenda. That's just the topic of discussion.
Well, I disagree because the, when the public is looking at the agenda, that's what they expect to be, the business to be taken up at the meeting will be what's on the agenda. That directs the, the meeting.
And you don't think?
This is public notification.
Exactly.
This is not a private little, you know, thing.
Yes, yes, I'm aware. Do you don't think a raise is employment terms?
Pardon?
You don't think a raise qualifies as employment terms?
No, not in the way you had it originally worded. That was, it appeared when it, the original
How do we move forward?
The original
Point of order, how do we move forward? How do you suggest we move forward?
To remove that I moved to give the superintendent a raise. That is not what I, I want that struck.
You did make that motion. Did anybody who was here misremember that any differently?
Is there any other discussion on the matter? Those in favor of accepting the minutes?
Those abstained? I wasn't here. Oh, you weren't there.
Those opposed?
You weren't even here.
I didn't. I just asked if I could have changed.
I'm saying, I'm asking too.
Please, please, please. I'm going through the procedure. We'll start again. Those in favor? Those opposed? Those abstained? Thank you. Recognition section? Uh, let's see. There's a new recognition section. Derrigo State at Colby College, Waterville, Maine, June 16 to 2000, June 16 to 21 this month. Five grade of Gloucester juniors have been accepted to participate in this program. Connor Hughes, Cameron Meek, Libby Witten, Lily Colby, and Noah Johnson. That's it for the recognition section this evening. Yeah, there is more. I'm sorry. Let me finish. Policy IKF honors diploma endorsement. The MSAD 15 Board of Directors recognizes students that achieve deep learning in specific content areas beyond graduation requirements through diploma endorsements. Students meeting honors endorsement requirements will receive recognition on their diploma during graduation exercise and on their transcript in MSAD 15. We have numerous students that achieve this distinction. Amelia Bowie in Humanities, Zach Murphy in Visual and Performing Arts, Sarah Patrickin, Distinguished Studies, Ben Powell for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics, Luca Rossolino in Humanities, Caitlin Sweeney, Distinguished Studies, Ellie Steele, Distinguished Studies, Kylie Timoto, Distinguished Studies, and Emily Wilson, Distinguished Studies. At Scholarship Night, for Senior Scholarship Night, the class of 2024 Scholarship Ceremony, 69 graduates were awarded more than $190,000 in scholarships from a wide variety of generous local and regional donors. I think that's magnificent that our local businesses and social and civic organizations have come up with $190,000 to help our students in their post-secondary education. I'd also like to recognize publicly that our long-serving Director of Operations in Finance, Diane Boucher, will be retiring technically June 30 this month. We did have a recognition social for her last night. And she's really been a remarkable person for this school district. I think the most important thing is, was not only was she highly competent, highly skilled. It's very rare that you meet a business manager who deals with numbers all day where it is obvious and evident that what she's doing, she has the kids in school in the back of her mind. Every decision she makes, she knows it's about a kid on a bus. Every decision she knows is about a student getting a lunch. Every decision she makes knows it's about the quality of the educational experience for our students. And so we thank her. She's been wonderful. I've learned a lot from her. And I just wish her well in her well-deserved retirement. You're here.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. We have no old business tonight. We have no, well, we do have new business, to elect a school board chair. I open the floor for nominations for a new school board chair. Yes.
I nominate Penny. Second.
All right, we have a nomination and a second for Penny Collins. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay. We close nominations. Any discussion?
I think Penny would do a great job. And I am looking forward to seeing her take up a gavel that I took up from Ann Rowe, which I consider to be a great honor. And hopefully Penny enjoys the experience as much as I do.
Wow.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The new school board chair is Penny Collins.
Looks like we had an abstainer that we should probably, we had
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there any abstain?
Yes.
Penny doesn't speak loud enough for me. And I wish you would bring the microphone closer so I can hear you. It's very difficult for me. So I would appreciate that. So I'm abstaining from the vote because I've spoken about this quite a few times. I hate bringing it up all the time.
All right. I also abstained because it was for me and I wasn't sure it was appropriate.
Okay. I'm now doing the ceremonial turning over the gavel to Penny.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I hope not to need to use it. All right. Do you want to keep going? You want me to take over?
You're the chair. That is, that's my annual leading of the school board.
Well done. All right. Next on the agenda is to take action on electing a vice chair. Opening the floor to nominations. Adam?
I'd like to nominate Gary Herriman.
I can't hear.
Sorry. Walked into that one. I'd like to nominate Gary as vice chair.
Second.
Any other nominations on the floor? All right. Any discussion?
I think Gary would do a great job. He has more experience than anybody else here on the board. And it's time, I think he's been on board for 16 years or something like that. I've never known him to be either chair or vice chair. So it's time for him to take his turn. And I'll teach him not to show up to a meeting.
That's right. All right. All in favor of electing Gary Herriman to the vice chair?
Does he have to accept?
Nope. It is put upon him. All right. Great. Moving on to some fun and exciting stuff. Let's hire some folks. Can I hear a nomination to appoint Bradley Nord to a first probationary contract as a point six art teacher at the Dunn School? Second. Care to introduce?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to introduce Brad Nord as our new art teacher at the Dunn School. Brad comes to us having taught for nine years out in the Midwest in Iowa and Illinois. He and his family moved to Brunswick in 2021. And he has been operating a graphic arts business, which he will continue. This position's point six, so he'll continue with his graphic arts position. And we are super excited to have Brad join our, our team. His enthusiasm and excitement for the content as well as kids and really came through in the interview and felt like he could really relate to our students. So really excited to have him come on board. We've had a great art program over the years at Dunn School with some really strong teachers. I think he's going to continue that right on through. So we're very excited to have Brad join us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Any discussion? Sam?
What do you call yourself as an art maker?
Um, gosh, that's a tough one. I would say, I would say I'm a designer. I mean, I have a degree in animation. I sculpt. I, I'm a graphic designer and illustrator professionally. So kind of, I'd say designer is probably the best way to describe it, but kind of a jack of all trades with the art stuff.
Awesome. Thanks for being here. Where you from? Where'd you go to school?
Oh, I'm originally from Illinois. I went to, my first degree is from the School of Visual Arts in New York, and that's my degree in animation. So I did that for a while. And then my teaching degree is from the University of Iowa.
Great.
What is point six? How many hours is that?
It, it, three days. So it's equivalent to three days a week. So he teaches Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday at Dunn School, full day each of those days.
Okay, thank you.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Welcome.
All right, welcome. Welcome. Thank you for coming in. It is, you're welcome to stay, but generally considered appropriate to sneak out.
Welcome.
All right. Moving on, we have some work to do related to yesterday's validation referendum. I'd hear a motion to, wait, do we, this is in several parts. Sorry, bear with me. So help me out on my first day. Sam, do we need to read the whole?
Yes, I'd be happy to. "Be it voted that the computation and declaration of votes dated June 11, 2024 and attached here to be approved, that the computation and declaration of votes be entered upon the records of Maine School Administrative District 15, and that the foregoing computation declaration shall be signed by majority of the school board, and that these signatures may be made electronically by execution of counterparts or in person at the convenience of the members of the school board." I move all of that.
Great. Second. Any discussion?
I do. So at the prior meeting, we signed this notification about what the budget would be. And we usually send it over to the town office. And so we all signed that. So when I was at the polls, I noticed that this was not posted in the booths. And it had been many times in the past. So I asked, in fact, she just left, but I asked why that was, why wasn't it posted? Because the taxpayers got to see the article, the item, but they didn't see the amount on the, on the warrant. And so she says, because the school board did not send over, it filled in with the amount approved by the voters at the budget meeting. Even though it's the same number, it's not filled in. Therefore, she did not post it. So I guess, I'm going to be careful what I sign in the future because I wasn't aware of that. I signed without, you know, noticing that was all blank. And I think it's important that we be as transparent as we can and help the taxpayers as much as they voters. and help the taxpayers as much as they voters, as much as they can when they go into the booth. So I just want to go on record, and hopefully next year, you know, there's nothing you can do about this year, next year that, you know, it'll be done the way it should be, and that it's not a law that it has to be posted. I already checked that. But it would be a convenience for the taxpayer, I think. A good thing to do. So that's what I would like to include to be taking place next year. As a comment.
So this one's different than the one you have? This one has all those amounts?
This is the one I signed is blank. And she... This is one she gave me yesterday saying that she couldn't post it because... Do you have a different copy?
That was signed at the town meeting, after the town meeting.
Yeah, I have that.
When all the numbers were approved, both sides would fill in. You sign that form twice. You sign that at the very beginning when we first decide getting the numbers together. Then at the town meeting, once all the numbers are approved, they're added to the paper, and that's where you sign. You sign again.
I signed it again?
Yes.
Yeah.
With the full of O. She just handed me this. I wish she stayed because she just handed it to me.
So I have here the official document signed by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of the school board members, and I believe... Oh, no, that's Lori.
The only one that I wasn't able to get to sign was Ms. Maury because you had left.
I'm sorry?
The only one that didn't sign it was Ms. Maury. She was there but didn't sign it because she had already left before I got out to get everything signed.
Your name is the first signature?
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
So the one you have in your...
But I don't remember that last... I don't remember that.
So Fran, the one you have in your hand is the one we signed before everything was finalized. This was the one we signed after. Additionally, I think the discussion on the motion on the table is our work to approve the declaration of votes that we have today, which is not that.
No, I understand that. I was making a comment. There was some comment, that's all. I'm not looking to change anything. I just made a comment. So then evidently, I was given misinformation yesterday.
Okay.
So that's on the record now.
Are there any other discussion related to the motion on the table?
Well...
So the motion on the table is us accepting the declaration of the results. Seeing none? All in favor? Opposed? All right, we have accepted the results of the budget validation referendum from yesterday. And while we're on the topic, I would love to thank all the voters who came out to be heard, and to both of our communities forming the district of SAD 15 for supporting our school budget this year. Next, I'm looking for a motion that the warrant for assessment of tax and the assessment schedule and notice of installments for each member municipality prepared by the treasurer for fiscal year 2024, 2025 be approved and be issued in form presented to this meeting, and that the treasurer be authorized and directed to deliver to each member municipality its warrant for assessment of tax and its assessment schedule and notice of installments.
So moved.
Any discussion on this piece?
Did we get the schedule? Did we get this somewhere?
Maggie, do we know the schedule? The one that we're voting on right now that the treasurer deliver? Well, I don't know that we know it yet because what we're voting on is to have the treasurer prepare these schedules and notice.
And deliver them.
And deliver them. So they can't do that work until we say so.
Is what we signed today? I have them for grade and last year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So is what's signed at the end of the meeting?
Right, so pass this around now so that people who want to see them can see them now.
Oh, wait, in the glass, okay.
All right, having all seen the schedule, any further discussion on this motion? All in favor? Opposed? Great. Brings us to setting dates for some summer school board meetings, which I'm sure everybody is excited to get on their calendar. So the recommendations or things that we typically do is at least one workshop that can be an onboarding or some professional development for the board as a group. And then it would be appropriate for us to meet once before the school year starts to approve any hires or address any business that has come up that the district would like our attention on. Given that we usually meet on Wednesdays, the dates I had loosely identified were off of Dr. King's list. July 24th and August 21st spaces us out pretty nicely without getting too close to our first September meeting. Is that going to work for folks? Is a great number of you on vacation at the same time on either July 24th or August 21st? July 24th and August 21st. Sorry, Sam?
My only concern is that if we don't meet until July 24th, we're going to have to, you know, interpret the money estimates from the engineers on the potential bond project and talk about how we might present that bond and prepare warrants and all that stuff. If we don't do that until the end of July, I'm worried we won't leave ourselves enough time to get the warrants prepared and all that jazz.
Okay.
So from my superintendent's report, I sent you a document. I have a hard copy of the document that might help inform planning the summer meetings. If we could do the, perhaps, come out of this agenda item and skip to the superintendent's report, or you could invite me to help inform you further about the meeting dates.
Oh, yeah, I think we can just go ahead and do that now. And I would also add that the architects will not have numbers for us until mid-July. So it's going to be tight.
So you have an electronic copy. I'm not giving you a hard copy. We met with the engineers yesterday to go over the timeline again and look at updating the timeline to include everything we would need to do. I'll give you five minutes to read it, and that might help you set dates for the summer meeting. And so this is an update from the timeline you had for the last meeting.
So for those of us who can't read along with us while we look at the calendar, it looks like we're proposing public meetings on July 17th and 22nd.
Correct.
Do I have a question? It just above it says estimated final design... Estimated final design July 15. What if they don't meet that July 15? That's not a die-hard date. It's just estimated.
So I met with them yesterday, all the architects and engineers. They will be finished by July 15, and they will be prepared to do a public presentation on the 17th at the high school and on the 22nd at Memorial School.
Point of clarity, Craig, will that be with the final design also back from the estimators on all the details?
Yes.
Okay, so we would have good numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask, what's the name of the publicity campaign? What is that? That's new.
So publicity campaign is how do you inform the public about the bond? How do you tell them what is in the project? Why you're having the bond? The changes that you would make if you were to make changes to the stage or changes to the cafeteria or changes to the athletic field? What problems would that solve? Why we want to do it, why we need to do it? So the publicity campaign would be like the two public meetings that we're going to have. Anything we would put in the newspaper, anything we'd put on our website would be publicity that the public could see what we're proposing.
So this is all you with them, consulting with the planning department, folks and all that? Who's going to do that? Doesn't say.
So that kind of work is done with the firm, the architectural firms themselves. We would have internal people from our technology department that would help create those pieces. We would have to hire perhaps a publisher to help create some of those pieces.
And some of that is already in what we've... Some of that work is already in what we've contracted for already?
Well, this is new though, this particular sentence.
Yes, but that is typical work that is done by these firms. So given this timeline, I would surely want to hear from the public before we met. Do we go with July 24th and August 7th? So we would meet right after the public meetings and then meet a couple weeks later to finalize warrants, articles, and any outstanding district work? And then we meet again on September 4th for our first business meeting of the year?
My birthday's July 23rd, so I'm probably not going to be around on the 24th. Probably be at camp, but I know that's just a minor thing. That's why we've got 11 members.
Okay.
What dates are you proposing, Penny? Apologies.
July 24th and August 7th.
August 7th, we come home from camp, so I'm hoping I'll be here, but I'll just work it out.
So many aren't here though for August, right? That's the same school board business meeting?
This is proposed. Yes, we have... We're going to firm that up now.
Okay.
Should we meet prior... Prior to this as well? I mean, it doesn't have to be... I don't know if it has to be all of us, but the bond committee to go over like, I don't know, no flyers, no thoughts of the cheerleading and how we're going to move forward? When are all those things going to be done, in the July 24th meeting? Board meeting?
Yes, because that's not going to be our work. That's going to be our work to approve or give guidance on. But the district is going to be doing that work because we'll have to... We'll have to get their input on the 17th and the 22nd. We meet on the 24th. And typically, so if we're looking for referendum language by the... Yeah, by early August with a referendum on September 24th, that's going to give us six full weeks, which is about as much time as folks' attention span is for being, you know, inundated with messaging, so.
I was just wondering, the September 24th date, is that set in stone?
Yes, we have. I pushed it out as far as we can go.
It's just kind of like fair week. That's my only concern. But if that's set, then that's set.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully people will be out and about, and when they're on the way to the fair, stop at the polls.
Absolutely.
That is a big bracelet day at the fair, right? No, that's Wednesday. Anyway, pretty far afield. So seeing no serious significant, you know, half the board having a conflict for either those dates, let's go ahead and... Sorry, Lauren?
July 24th, I'll be coming back from Ypres, so I don't know if I'll be in time.
Okay.
Excuse me, raise your hands. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to raise your hands. Who won't be on the 24th? There's a couple of people already.
I might.
We have one for sure and one maybe.
Okay.
So given it's July and that fits with what Dr. King's asking for, I think that's what we're going to go with. All right, great.
I have one more question.
Sorry, Sam?
Are we hoping to do like orientation, organizational review type work at either of those meetings?
Yes.
Which one? 7th?
Probably. I'm trying to think which one will actually have more bond work in it. We also could set aside, you know, 45 minutes at both to not over...
I just want to make sure the bond is going to like be big shiny object. And I think it's important that, you know, we review our goals and, you know, our performance over the past year and make sure we do a little forward-looking and that kind of thing.
For sure. Let's plan on setting aside some time at the outset of both of those meetings and then continue it into the fall. Okay. So, hang on, I've gotten a real pile of mess here. So we have set some dates. Committee reports. We have not had any since we last met. School board chair report, I've been in the post for about 10 minutes, but I'm actually... I'm going to take a little bit of this time. There's been a lot of nice things said about some folks who have worked really hard for this district. And someone who has not been mentioned is our outgoing chair, Sam, who's rolling his eyes, but everyone likes to be thanked. And it does not escape my notice that, or any of our notice, that Sam's here today when... when he was supposed to be retired from this and home enjoying his free time. And I think Sam's been a great leader, a good mentor to me and has made the serious work of this board often fun. And I appreciate all of the efforts you've given to the district.
Thank you very much, Penny. I appreciate it.
All right, now, Dr. King, we've completely made a mess of some of your report. Do you want to return to details on the timeline or?
So.
The floor is yours.
Yeah, so in terms of the timeline, it was, I got the, I got the architects and the engineer all in the same room at the same time and to really focus on the timeline to make sure they had time to do the work they did, needed to do and that we needed to do. And I wanted to make sure we had at least two public meetings, one in each town to get the people out. So the focus groups we wanted to do have now morphed into the two public meetings in Gray and Noglotter. And then I indicated some of the things that are new, the June 11 meeting yesterday that we did. New today is I've begun organizing a meeting with the planning board people and the code enforcement people in both Gray and Noglotter so that they're aware of our plans because there will be, there'll be an intersection there of any construction we do. Certainly for the air filtration work that will be done at the schools will require planning board and code enforcement people. So we plan tentatively to have that meeting around June 24. The other piece is the publicity campaign, which I had mentioned before that we're going to have printed and electronic information out to people. But usually the firm said that usually when a school department or a hospital or whatever organization is launching some type of campaign, they have some sort of catchphrase name for whatever that project is. For example, in MSAD 51, their plan is to have one campus, K through 12, and close down one of their elementary schools. And so the name of the campaign is One Campus. And so it's, it's, it's not something you have to do, but it helps people identify with what, what you're trying to do. So we need to, should come up with something catchy. The two meetings are the new pieces. The purpose of the meeting doesn't change. The public feedback will inform piece doesn't change. And then that's it. It's just a cleared up timeline and our work beginning to outreach to the two towns and the people we need to work with there.
Great. Any questions about this piece? Ms. D?
I feel like I'm missing, I'm missing something only because I, the cheerleading or the publicity campaign, I guess, all the information that we need to gather regarding previous bonds or compared to other districts and what they've put out for bonds, what we've spent on facilities over the past years. There was a screen on during the public meeting showing our history and what we've spent or haven't spent that, you know, that were due, like all of that backup information. When will we be gathering that to present? Or is that something? Because that's our information. The actitas wouldn't have that. So all of that information, like if somebody comes to me with a question and says la, 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 if they're for it or against it and they have questions, I just want to be fully informed of all of the back data that I need to support and cheerlead this. So when will that come into play?
So the approach is two tiered. So you already have a lot of information and there's already lots of information on the website about the bond. So for example, last fall, it was determined, we, before we go any further, we want to really determine, is there anything out there lurking in the district that we don't know about? Like, do we need to put in new electrical systems in the elementary schools or whatever? So we spent about six weeks deep diving into the electrical systems, the water systems, the roofing, everything we could think of. And we got the date of completion, the last date that there was a renovation, the last date that something was serviced, and we took all that information and created a very large compendium of information. That will be on the website. So the publicity piece will be a website page, perhaps a mailer to homes, perhaps a centerfold thing in the forecaster newspaper. And so that's the main information that the average citizen wants to see and understand. That is linked to all that backend information. So if you really want to read the 82-page infrastructure document that was created, there's a link to get to that.
Right.
Yeah, and so there will be people that like to read the really in-depth, the publicity information will have the link to direct them there.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions on the timeline?
Can I get clarification that the July 17th and the 22nd, they're, the meetings are essentially the same? It's not that they're going to come back?
Correct. You'll have the, you'll have the architects, you'll, you'll have all the key players, the people, mechanical services, you'll have Veritas, and you'll have Mr. Johanning representing all three architectural firms and the rotating revolving fund air quality piece. They are going to have a visual presentation very similar to what you saw last time. It'll be more refined. There'll be more imagery of what the end result, the end product will look like for both the internal and the fields. They will have the cost estimates and they will be, it'll be probably a kick above what you saw before. It's going to be a much more thorough, much more finished project and so, and that'll be the time where the board will be able to determine how we lay this project out and what phases we lay the project out. Those kinds of questions will be the final questions so that you can create, so that our, our law firm can create the questions that will appear on the ballot, whether it's one question, two questions, three questions, four questions.
At these meetings, will we also have in addition to the, you know, the design team, the engineering folks, the, those handful of administrators who were so instrumental in getting to this point in terms of knowing?
This is a, this is a broad general public meeting. You know, I hope a couple hundred people go and, yeah, the administrators will be there.
Great.
Assuming they're not at camp, which is, seems to be a perennial problem in Maine in the summertime.
Yeah, I just, I think it'd be great to have one or two of them there in addition as folks who know, know us.
Yeah, Mrs. Grealish and Mr. Priest are going to be front and center from here on in, in terms of as they lead those departments and lead those programs, you know, we need their insight and participation at the table.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, because I'm assuming that with this public feedback piece that there will be lots of comments, which is great. We want those, but they're going to need comments back, like where did this come from? Why do we need this? What are the numbers? Who can't fit in the cafeteria and eat lunch right now? Like, those are the numbers that people in the public are going to want to hear.
And the other big piece from our meeting yesterday was a very clear resolution to the parking, driving around the building, egress access, all the civil engineering around the roads, the parking lot, that is going to be completely overhauled for those two meetings.
Jim?
I see July 15th is the estimated final design and it'll have a cost estimate. At what point will we have calculated the impact on taxpayer or tax, tax bills?
So Diane has those numbers? If you were to do just, let's say you were just to do one piece, if she knows what that looks like?
She's got a scale.
Yeah, or if you were to do two pieces, or if you were to do one piece this year and another piece five years, she has numbers on that.
Grant?
You mentioned it'd be on the website. I need help with that. But where would that be? What website?
There is not a website yet, but there would be something created specific due to, due to the magnitude of the project. We would likely create something for it especially. That does not yet exist.
Be under, under the MSAD 15 or?
Yes, it would be part of the MSAD 15 website. You would go to the MSAD 15 website as you normally would, and there would be either a red banner or something very prominent on the front page that would say bond project details. Yeah.
Okay.
If, that's it.
All right. Great. Super exciting to see this come together. I look forward to talking about it more later in the summer. And, oh, so, sorry, I interrupted you. You have superintendent reports still?
Yeah, I'm.
Just, just working it out, guys.
New hires, Roger DeHietry, second shift custodian memorial school. Resignations, Angeline Markcott at Tech 2 at the high school. Brenda Emerson, school secretary at the middle school. Elena Tomlinson, science teacher at the high school. Erica Patrickton, gifted talented teacher memorial school. Transfers, Jeffrey Hamilton, senior, will transfer from a mechanic position in transportation department to a van driver in the transportation department. And that's it for the superintendent's report.
All right. And Maggie, could you help me out? Signing, does everyone have to sign something?
Just you.
Nope, everybody.
Do you have a different one?
Oh, that one.
So other than signing for Maggie in our role as school board members in validating yesterday's election, that is the end of our agenda.
Again, the same light pen that you guys will love so much.
That's the majority thing, right?
This is validating the numbers.
Sorry, I can't understand. Oh, okay.
This is town. Did you get the updated numbers from Noglotter?
Yeah, I did. Mm-hmm. So this is MSAD 15, 637. Okay. And then the Noglotter is?
So I just signed?
Yeah, just make sure you sign on the same line.
Oh, okay.
The honor roll. You wanted to read the back page. You want me to do that? It's just the assessment.
That's what I thought. Yeah, it's okay. Do I adjourn so people can leave after they sign or?
I think we might as well make signing part of our official business.
And this doesn't matter where I sign?
Yeah, just sign on the Noglotter.
Okay.
These are the towns. This is just all the.
I did, and here is that for you.
Down the street from some Lakkedees.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where my husband's from. Yeah, my husband's watch Harold Lakkedees.
I remember, was it, she's for a long time.
Penny is Miss Fen for Colman.
Was it on Seventh Street?
No, French Island, she says. Yeah, but he's got cousins over.
Right, yeah. This is.
I grew up on Seventh Street.
Okay.
And then we moved.
Oh, yeah.
I was in fourth grade.
Yeah.
I was at Helen Hunt for fourth grade. Then we went to Herbert Sargent.
This is the one you wanted to do.
Second, third and fourth quarter of fourth grade.
Can you get a photo of me, so we can share?
Jopson Street for kindergarten and St. Joseph's for first, second, third, and then there's Class of 81.
Oh, okay. Yeah. I've got the next sheet. Someone needs a special pen.
No, you got it.
They're all blocked there.
Oh, it has to be blocked.
At the same light. Teachers would like to not take any chances with their nonsense. They're all related.
Wait until I have your son's ticket. I'm going to make you a proper.
When is that special?
I'm going to remember this.
I like to have the point line.
We have successfully managed this meeting until 7:35. Congratulations, Penny.
The die is passed.